Okay. The Chair will call to order tonight's regular meeting of the CUSD 201 Board of Education. It's October 26, 2021. Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Redonia?
Here.
Mr. Marin?
Here.
Ms. Stuckaty?
Here.
Mr. Avia?
Here.
Ms. Hoover?
Here.
Ms. Conover?
Here.
Ms. Coyle?
Here.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss personnel issues, student discipline, and the superintendent's evaluation.
Still moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Stuckaty?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
The board is resuming open session. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 12, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the October 12, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public comment. I do not believe we have any public comments tonight, so we will move on to the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Number one, personnel recommendations. Jeffrey Bernstein interim assistant principal, Westmont Junior High School. Alex Christensen, long-term math interventionist, Manning. Adam McDaniel's freshman basketball coach, Westmont High School. Jean Petersak, sophomore basketball coach, Westmont High School. Number two, approval of October 2021 expenditure report. Number three, ratification of September 2021 regular payroll. Number four, renewal of life, AD and D, and long-term disability insurance. Number five, renewal of vision insurance. I have a motion.
I was just gonna say so moved.
Second.
Roll call please. Ms. Deckerty?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
So information and discussion items are next, and we have the Westmont High School admin team here to present an update.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Great to see everyone. I've been waiting two years for this, seriously. Open and everything, so it's great to be in front of you again. And one of my favorite things in this world is to talk about Westmont High School and the accomplishments of our school community. Thank you to Superintendent Carey, the board, to our community, to our parents, to everybody who supports the work that's done, our teachers and students and staff who are just amazing. I'm just so proud of them. And there's a couple of major themes tonight that we want to talk about, but I also want to introduce Kevin and Megan, just briefly say a few words about them. They have a few things to say. We throw a lot of materials at you, but I'd rather give you more information than less. Everything we talk about can be accessed online. You can go to all these websites, and the data is readily available. We just consolidated it here to really talk about what's been accomplished and what's been done. And the key really to me is, one of the themes for our school, and I know for our district too, comes from the Jim Collins book, Good to Great. The good is the enemy of great. And I think that we have gone to great, and it's a continuous journey. We know that. The minute you start settling is when you go backwards. We get that. We're all about continuous improvement. But in most categories, we're not just great, we're the best. Seriously, and that's the information we want to present tonight. Whether it's the Four Award is the best in the nation, 10 out of 10, the only school in DuPage County to earn that from a national ranking system, the National Blue Ribbon Award, the exemplary rating every year since it's been instituted. It's not just good or great, but in many cases, we can't do any better in the rankings. And in some cases, we can, and we're striving to do that. But I want to talk a little bit about the information and what our plans are next. But before I do, just three major themes. First, the most improved, because there's a lot to take in, but these are the most important. We are the most improved high school in the United States. I could say that with confidence. I can show you the sources and evidence. Considering there's over 25,000 high schools in America, regular high schools, that's saying a lot. To be the most improved, not just in the state, but in the nation, that's a big deal. Also, I would argue, the most overachieving. In a lot of these categories, you will see affluent schools, the wealthiest schools in the country. You will see private schools, charter schools, selective enrollment schools, then all of a sudden, you see this middle school powerhouse, Westmont High School pop up. It's very powerful. The things that we're achieving, there's no other high school in the state of Illinois has ever achieved this, and I'll show you that data. And then the other thing is, we're one of the top-performing schools in the country. One of the reasons that we got to this place is because we know that we are always looking to get better. It's continuous improvement. Being the best in many categories doesn't mean we're perfect. It means we've got more work to do. But I am proud, and it's only fair to the students and the staff and the community, which includes everybody, in a time when there's a lot of, you know, back and forth amongst people. One of the most powerful things we have is that we all came together as a CUSD 201, as a community, and it's because of that cohesiveness that we were able to achieve excellence. And that's a really important theme. So I'd like to start by introducing Dr. Kevin Weck, who is an amazingly talented individual, unbelievably dedicated, loves our students, would go through the wall for our students, has one of the most difficult jobs in our district, because he not only attends to curriculum and teacher evaluation, and he's a partner in all of our leadership activities, but as the dean of discipline at a high school, that's not the most popular position. But he handles these affairs with fairness and kindness and compassion, and that's what makes, one of the many things that makes him an excellent administrator. So I want Dr. Weck to say a few words.
Thank you, Jack. I'm Kevin Weck, and I'm one of the assistant principals at Westmont High School. I first want to say thank you to the school board and Mr. Carey for having us here tonight. I, we, are so proud of what our students and staff have been able to accomplish. There's a word that comes to mind when I think about this journey, and that's remarkable. It's been a remarkable journey. And one of the things that we encourage our students to do is to dream big, to believe in themselves, to take risks. And with that, we as a building have modeled that behavior, and we set big, hairy, audacious goals each and every year, and Jack calls those B-hags. With that, our students, each and every year, with our staff, they rise to the occasion. These aren't easy goals to accomplish. If they were, every school would accomplish them. But our students and staff believe in themselves, they support one another, and they've been able to accomplish these goals to get us to the point where we can say we're one of the best schools in America. And with that, you know, a lot of times we get asked the question, you know, what does this mean for our students? Well, Westmont High School, universities and colleges are taking notice of what we're doing, and it gives our students an advantage when they do apply for colleges because of what we've been able to accomplish. Some of our students are going on to college as second semester freshmen because of the credits they've accumulated, or even sophomores that puts money back in their pocket and that gives them a leg up, and they're prepared for college coursework. And a lot of that comes back to, our students believe that they can go toe-to-toe with any other high school in this country, and Westmont High School is one of the best, if not the best, school in America. And for our students, that gives them a sense of pride, confidence, and almost like a Westmont swagger or moxie that they get a chance to walk through the community with. And that sometimes you'll see our students are wearing the Westmont or Bestmunt gear in the community, and many of you have seen those T-shirts. They're proud of that. You come to our school, and every day you'll see some of our students wearing this attire, and they wear it when they're outside in the community, but also when they go to away games. You know, there's a strong sense of pride when our students go and they visit some of our rival schools for competitions, and they can wear this attire that says, hey, we've accomplished all these different accolades, and it gives them the pride that they need to believe in themselves and to really dream big and push themselves. So this has been an amazing journey. I'm so proud of them, and I'm looking forward to celebrating with all of you in the upcoming weeks. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. And next is Megan VerVink, who is just a tireless worker for students. It's just amazing to watch her go above and beyond for our young people. She's so bright and motivated and hardworking and organized, but the most powerful characteristic she has is she never gives up on our students. And during the pandemic, we really needed that, because there are a lot of kids who are really struggling, and we're not all the way through it either. But Megan would do anything it would take, and visiting their houses the way Kevin does too, or hanging in there with kids who really were wanting to give up, and Megan never gives up on our kids, especially those who are struggling the most. So I want Megan to stand up for just a minute and say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for having us here this evening and giving us this opportunity to brag about all the great things that are happening at Westmont High School. I want to say thank you for the trust that you've given to the students and staff, for our staff to be able to try new things, to experiment, to give them the capacity to give these pathways to our students so that they can accomplish all of these amazing things. And that comes from starting with all of you, to open the door, to give the teachers something that they may not get in another district. The independence to make decisions and the trust that you have that you're, they're always doing this best for kids. And I stand behind our staff and our students 100%, and I believe in them. And thank you for giving us this opportunity to share with all of you what that means and how we are able to get there. And I'm really looking forward to being able to celebrate all these years of accomplishments, building towards the National Blue Ribbon, because one of the very first things I said, Jeff, when I started was, how do we get there? And I appreciate that in these last four or five years that I've been with you all, that we've found the pathway to accomplish that, because it's such a huge deal, to be nationally recognized in such a way that makes us stand out amongst other schools in Illinois and in the country, and so thank you. And I really look forward to, to Jack and our team sharing all the accomplishments. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. I will move pretty quickly. If you have any questions, please ask them now or ask them after, whenever is convenient for you. I think the secret to our success is that our students are sacred to us. We talk most, we're going to hear a lot about goals and data and rankings, and those things are important, but what really matters most is compassion towards each other, and that's a continuous journey. We're never going to be finished with that, but we're always promoting the idea that the most important thing that our young people can be is compassionate and good to...
Thanks.
...and 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 good to... accessed online. You can go to all these websites, and the data is readily available. We just consolidated it here to really talk about what's been accomplished and what's been done. And the key really to me is, one of the themes for our school, and I know for our district too, comes from the Jim Collins book, Good to Great. The good is the enemy of great. And I think that we have gone to great, and it's a continuous journey. We know that. The minute you start settling is when you go backwards. We get that. We're all about continuous improvement. But in most categories, we're not just great, we're the best. Seriously, and that's the information we want to present tonight. Whether it's the Four Award is the best in the nation, 10 out of 10, the only school in DuPage County to earn that from a national ranking system, the National Blue Ribbon Award, the exemplary rating every year since it's been instituted, it's not just good or great, but in many cases, we can't do any better in the rankings. And in some cases, we can, and we're striving to do that. But I want to talk a little bit about the information and what our plans are next. But before I do, just three major themes. First, the most improved, because there's a lot to take in, but these are the most important. We are the most improved high school in the United States. I could say that with confidence. I can show you the sources and evidence. Considering there's over 25,000 high schools in America, regular high schools, that's saying a lot. To be the most improved, not just in the state, but in the nation, that's a big deal. Also, I would argue, the most overachieving. In a lot of these categories, you will see affluent schools, the wealthiest schools in the country. You will see private schools, charter schools, selective enrollment schools, then all of the sudden, you see this middle school powerhouse, Westmont High School pop up. It's very powerful. The things that we're achieving, there's no other high school in the state of Illinois has ever achieved this, and I'll show you that data. And then the other thing is, we're one of the top performing schools in the country. One of the reasons that we got to this place is because we know that we are always looking to get better. It's continuous improvement. Being the best in many categories doesn't mean we're perfect. It means we've got more work to do. But I am proud, and it's only fair to the students and the staff and the community, which includes everybody. And in a time when there's a lot of, you know, back and forth amongst people, one of the most powerful things we have is that we all came together as a CUSD 201, as a community, and it's because of that cohesiveness that we were able to achieve excellence. And that's a really important theme. So, I'd like to start by introducing Dr. Kevin Weck, who is an amazingly talented individual, unbelievably dedicated, loves our students, would go through the wall for our students, has one of the most difficult jobs in our district, because he not only attends to curriculum and teacher evaluation, and he's a partner in all of our leadership activities, but as the dean of discipline at a high school, that's not the most popular position. But he handles these affairs with fairness and kindness and compassion, and that's what makes one of the many things that makes him an excellent administrator. So I want Dr. Weck to say a few words.
Thank you, Jack. I'm Kevin Weck, and I'm one of the assistant principals at Westmont High School. I first want to say thank you to the school board and Mr. Carey for having us here tonight. I, we, are so proud of what our students and staff have been able to accomplish. There's a word that comes to mind when I think about this journey, and that's remarkable. It's been a remarkable journey. And one of the things that we encourage our students to do is to dream big, to believe in themselves, to take risks. And with that, we as a building have modeled that behavior. And we set big, hairy, audacious goals each and every year, and Jack calls those BHAGs. With that, our students, each and every year, with our staff, they rise to the occasion. These aren't easy goals to accomplish. If they were, every school would accomplish them. But our students and staff believe in themselves, they support one another, and they've been able to accomplish these goals to get us to the point where we can say we're one of the best schools in America. And with that, you know, a lot of times, we get asked the question, you know, what does this mean for our students? Well, Westmont High School, universities and colleges are taking notice of what we're doing. And it gives our students an advantage when they do apply for colleges because of what we've been able to accomplish. Some of our students are going on to college as second semester freshmen because of the credits they've accumulated, or even sophomores. That puts money back in their pocket, and that gives them a leg up, and they're prepared for college coursework. And a lot of that comes back to, our students believe that they can go toe to toe with any other high school in this country. And Westmont High School is one of the best, if not the best, school in America. And for our students, that gives them a sense of pride, confidence, and almost like a Westmont swagger or moxie that they get a chance to walk through the community with. And that sometimes you'll see, our students are wearing the Westmont or Best Mind gear in the community. Many of you have seen those T-shirts. They're proud of that. You come to our school, and every day, you'll see some of our students wearing this attire. And they wear it when they're outside in the community, but also when they go to away games. You know, there's a strong sense of pride when our students go and they visit some of our rival schools for competitions, and they can wear this attire that says, hey, we've accomplished all these different accolades. And it gives them the pride that they need to believe in themselves and to really dream big and push themselves. So this has been an amazing journey. I'm so proud of them, and I'm looking forward to celebrating with all of you in the upcoming weeks. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. And next is Megan VerVink, who is just a tireless worker for students. It's just amazing to watch her go above and beyond for our young people. She's so bright and motivated and hardworking and organized, but the most powerful characteristic she has is she never gives up on our students. And during the pandemic, we really needed that, because there are a lot of kids who are really struggling, and we're not all the way through it either. But Megan would do anything it would take, and visiting their houses the way Kevin does too, or hanging in there with kids who really were wanting to give up. And Megan never gives up on our kids, especially those who are struggling the most. So I want Megan to stand up for just a minute and say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for having us here this evening and giving us this opportunity to brag about all the great things that are happening at Westmont High School. I want to say thank you for the trust that you've given to the students and staff, for our staff to be able to try new things, to experiment, to give them the capacity to give these pathways to our students so that they can accomplish all of these amazing things. And that comes from, starting with all of you, to open the door, to give the teachers something that they may not get in another district. The independence to make decisions and the trust that you have that you're, they're always doing this best for kids. And I stand behind our staff and our students 100%, and I believe in them. And thank you for giving us this opportunity to share with all of you what that means and how we were able to get there. And I'm really looking forward to being able to celebrate all these years of accomplishments, building towards the National Blue Ribbon, because one of the very first things I said, Jeff, when I started was, how do we get there? And I appreciate that in these last four or five years that I've been with you all, that we've found the pathway to accomplish that, because it's such a huge deal, to be nationally recognized in such a way that makes us stand out amongst other schools in Illinois and in the country. And so, thank you. And I really look forward to, to Jack and our team sharing all the accomplishments. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. I will move pretty quickly. If you have any questions, please ask them now or ask them after, whenever is convenient for you. I think the secret to our success is that our students are sacred to us. We talk most, we're going to hear a lot about goals and data and rankings, and those things are important, but what really matters most is compassion towards each other, and that's a continuous journey. We're never going to be finished with that, but we're always promoting the idea that the most important thing that our young people can be is compassionate and good to each other, and respectful, and to give back to this world. And our students know that they're sacred to us, and we talk to them about that all the time. We have a championship vision. We know what our promised land looks like, and we work towards it tenaciously, and it's a job that's never done. And here's some of the evidence. So, we looked at actually about a dozen different criteria to really benchmark against, to see where we have been and where we go. So I just want to go through that pretty quickly. The first is the graduation rate. You have this chart that comes from Illinois State Board of Education School Report Card. This is not something we created, it's something the state created, and they Hawkeye every single student. There's no playing games here. So the results there for Westmont High School are very clear. I want to tell you that the state average of 88% is where we were in 2011. That was our graduation rate. Over the last close to 10 years, we've only had six students drop out. Every single African American and Latino student, we haven't had one drop out in the last nine years. That's almost unprecedented, and I'm very proud of that. And it was really, it's symbolic of the never give up on our students attitude that our entire staff embodies. Our advanced placement program, and Kevin alluded to this, has really, we went from 29 past exams to over 300, from three AP Scholars to 65. And whether you look at the U.S. News &amp; World Report, or if you look at the Challenge Index, we are the most improved advanced placement program in the United States for any regular high school. That's saying a lot. Part of the importance of that is that we're highly inclusive. Any student who wants to take a chance, we open the doors wide for them, and we beg the students to be a part of that. So we have one of the most inclusive programs in the United States. This is from J. Matthews. It's the oldest ranking system of high schools in the country. This is a recent book that Westmont High School is mentioned in, where we are the number one regular public high school in the state of Illinois. We're number two overall behind a magnet school out of Chicago. But we've looked at all the schools in front of us and many of them behind us, and none has improved more in the last 10 years than Westmont High School. And we were the number one regular high school those two years. On the SAT, which is our state exam, you can see we're an outlier in our performance. The red triangle represents our achievement. We are outperforming any regular high school in our economic area. We're outperforming close to 100 schools that have much less poverty than we do. Of course, this is always an area where we seek to, for continuous improvement, not just in the proficiency scores, but for students who don't reach proficiency to see that they grow. And that's important, because if you look at the state, there's nobody who's above, besides the magnet schools up on top here, and those are all the other outliers, our charter schools and selective enrollment schools. The state average is around 50%, so we can't just pay attention to proficiency. We have to pay attention to all students and their growth, and I think we do a tremendous job of that. U.S. News &amp; World Report, most improved school in Illinois and in the United States. We currently rank 15 amongst regular public high schools in Illinois, 25 overall. The schools that are similar to us start coming in in the 60s and 70s. So, we're way overachieving there. There's no question about that. And all that information, exemplary every year, and not only have we been exemplary every year, we are the school with the highest poverty rate that's earned exemplary every year. It's important to note. Obviously, the PLC model is something the district has practiced for the last 10 years. We're not only a national model PLC, but as many of you know, we were named the best in the United States of America. A panel of 15 experts selected us amongst many contenders, and we weren't just good or great, but the best in the United States. And we've gotten a lot of recognition for that. We have the video. We're not going to play it tonight, but where they talk about Westmont and talk about this being one of the most prestigious awards in American education, best in the nation. Of course, the National Blue Ribbon, you can't apply for it. You have to be selected for it. It's not just, there's only been 18 regular public schools in Illinois in the last 20 years that have won the Blue Ribbon, 18. The average poverty rate of those 18 schools is 8%. The highest poverty rate besides Westmont is 16%. Westmont comes at a 32% for free and reduced students. So this is usually an award that is reserved for affluent schools, for private schools, for selective enrollment schools, for charter schools. There hasn't been any school in the last 20 years like Westmont that's won this award. And as I said, you cannot apply for it. You have to be selected, and then you apply. So Kevin and Megan and I are going out to Washington next week to represent this amazing district and pick up our National Blue Ribbon Award. But I really am very proud, because like I said, it's not just winning the award that's pretty rare, it's that we are rare amongst the schools that have won it. So this is what we call the Sentinel. When we show this at our assemblies, and we share this data with our kids, and like Kevin and Megan said, the purpose is to get them fired up and believing that they can accomplish anything. We want them walking sky high around our building and believing they can do anything that they put their minds to, and that we are there with them shoulder to shoulder. And if we throw this little baby up on the screen, close to 400 kids go pretty crazy. Of course, 10 out of 10, this is a national, they rank every public school in the United States, and they give a rating from 1 to 10. I'm very proud, and they use a number of different criteria. I think it's a little bit more fair than some of the systems. We're the only high school out of all the great schools in DuPage. We're the only one to get 10 out of 10. You have the listing in your packet of the different rankings of all the schools in DuPage. Statewide, once again, there are only 15 regular high schools that get 10 out of 10. The only school with only over 20% of students living in economic poverty is Westmont. It's dominated again by wealthy schools. We also earn an A+ from NISH. That's the current highest rating. Our scores would be even higher, but quite frankly, one of the indicators they use is salary scale. And you get points for your salary schedule, and there are schools that pay more than ours. So we have the highest rating there, but we'd have even a higher rating if we had some of the other resources. Not complaining, we have an amazing staff allocation at Westmont High School, which is one of the great things that has made a difference over these years. So I thank Superintendent Carey and the board for that. It's not just the rankings or the goals or the numbers, but we're really getting noticed. So, there's so many, almost too many to mention, and I'm coming in for a close here, but just one book after another, just in the last year and a half, two years, is recognized, and as Dr. Weck said, they write about us, they use us as an example for continuous improvement. They talk about how we're a model school for the nation, or one of the top achieving schools. So we've been mentioned in one publication after another. That's not common. To be mentioned once in a while, but to be mentioned continuously in one publication after another, that's pretty rare. This is our friend from Japan who said we were the best school he's ever seen, who picked us. In addition to the academic piece, you're all familiar with the Five Essentials Survey, which I think trends more towards social emotional. We are once again in the top 1% for Chicagoland area, in the most, because there's literally 40 different subcategories and more data than you can ever imagine. But one of the things I think is the most important is teacher-student relationship. In the most recent Five Essentials, our students anonymously gave our teacher-student relationship score of 99, the highest possible rating. I think that says a lot, and I think that's why we succeed. And here's some of the specific data. For leadership effectiveness, over the last four years, we have the highest score in the Chicagoland area. Not one of the best, the best. Currently, the best of any regular high school for leadership effectiveness in the Chicagoland area on the Five Essentials score for regular high schools in our region. So here's some of the backup data. When it comes to equity, which of course is something that is such an important issue for all American schools and for everybody, we always have more work to do. But we are one of the most inclusive schools in the country. Our graduation rate is second to none when it comes to equity, and we're recognized. This is just an example. Dr. Anthony Mohammed, and I want to read his quote, says, "The gains at Westmont High School, especially for students of color and students of poverty, should be studied by scholars nationally and internationally as a beacon of hope for schools striving to produce equity." That, I'm as proud of that as I am all the rankings, the scores, or anything else. It's really a powerful testament to who we are as a school community. Of course, we have more work to do. That's obvious. But we have really achieved at levels to get the attention of scholars and researchers and authors, and I happen to know Dr. Mohammed, and he doesn't say something that he doesn't believe in thoroughly. So, this is our equity overview, which is one of the best in the country, from, once again, great schools. We continuously look and benchmark against the top schools in the state. We're looking towards continuous improvement, all we do. But I really, as Megan started to say, we're very grateful. I have to pinch myself, because I love the work that we do together. It's exciting. We're well supported by Superintendent Carey, by the whole district, by the school board, by our amazing parents, and the work that the teachers and staff and my colleagues do is really pretty incredible. So, we have more work to do. We always will. But I think what we've accomplished as an entire school community is really powerful. And as somebody who's been obsessed with this data for 30 years, I think it's second to none. So thank you for all your support. We will continue to build on this, but it is time to celebrate, because these are some pretty amazing accomplishments. So, stop me now, because I'll keep talking. If there's any questions or insights or anything we can talk about.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say, I mean, congratulations doesn't sound like enough to say. Jack, you and your team have done an amazing job. Megan, Kevin, all of the teachers, staff, students, parents, families, to get us to this point under Kevin's leadership. And so, it's just really impressive how far we've come, and, you know, really excited for you all to be able to go to Washington DC and accept that National Blue Ribbon Award, and, I mean, maybe just take stock of all the, all the hard work, all the effort, everything that's gone into getting us to, to this point, and, you know, and, and just really reflect on yourselves and what, what great work you've done, because it's truly, truly impressive and, and almost overwhelming how well we're doing and you're doing. So, thank you and congratulations. And we look forward to continuing to see things, you know, moving in the, the same direction. So, does anybody else want to comment or chime in?
Just reiterate everything Laura said, and I appreciate you guys continue to keep a fire lit under your peers, because we can see all the other admin trying to strive to just, they know they can't keep up with you guys, you know. But they're really trying to strive to, just to have that passion. They all have that passion. We could see all the work that they're doing to just, and thank you for being a great example to them as well.
So, I, all of that. Right. I came from the Hinsdale district. I graduated from Hinsdale South many, many years ago. And being from that district, I understand really intrinsically, like, how those high schools are viewed within their communities, right? You go to Hinsdale because you want to have your children go to that school, right? And that's almost, it's, it's part of the culture, and it's part of like, how those communities are made, right? And one of the reasons, the biggest reason, that I came to Westmont was our size. When, when I came to Westmont a long time ago, the high school was not doing what we were doing right now, but it, it was still, it was the size of it, right, versus those communities. But how do we take this, right, this growth, this amazing growth over the last 10 years? And how do we make it part of our culture as a part of this community, right? So that when realtors are showing people homes in Hinsdale, or Burr Ridge, or Downers Grove, right, all our neighboring communities, they are talking about Westmont High School being the best of those four, right? Not just now, but so that it is, it becomes in that very same way, right, part of that community, that Westmont. So, so how does this live beyond us here today, right? All of us on the board, Jack, you've been in, you've been in the business for 30 years, right? One day, you'll retire. How does this live for our future, right? How does this live for the next 10 years? What work are we doing to make sure that this level of excellence stays in place? And how can we support you in that? But what's already happening? Because I want to celebrate all the work, but this is all, this is all work that has happened in the past. What's the work that we need to do in the future to make sure that we stay here? Because if we can't stay here, right, then I don't ever want to, I don't, I don't want to ever say, ooh, we didn't stick there, right? You know, so, long question.
Maybe we can't let Jack retire.
I love that question, because it really, we have to stay on our toes. We have to stay pushing. We can't ever rest on our laurels. We have to, and by that, everybody that we deal with saying, you know what, we're proud, but we have to use it as fuel for a continuous improvement program. And, and part of what you're talking about is, we're, we want to spread the news about it to everybody, and not just here, but that's partly with the publications, to get the word out in the country, but also locally. And then you say with real estate agents, we can't wait. We had a really great Realtor Fair a couple of years ago. Amy Cuadrone organized that. And to be able to say, because they know the great schools ranking. Everybody knows, when you go to Zillow, you see great schools. And it's, I don't know if I particularly love the ranking, but it is nice to say we're the only 10 out of 10 in DuPage County. And if you just use one criteria, people would say, well, that's just one criteria. But when we can back it up with the Blue Ribbon, and exemplary rating, and our test scores, and our rankings, that really gets people's attention, and that's what, we can't wait for the Realtor Fair. I know, we're talking about doing that maybe in January, and getting the news out to everybody. But the real, it's just, everybody keeping, as you have done for us, and as the community has done, to keep lifting each other up, to keep building on the successes, to keep celebrating the genuine successes, but never to rest on our laurels. And I love that question, because I think it really emphasizes the need to keep fueling it. And it's beautiful, but you never, it's never ending, right, if you're serious about it.
Well, it's, it's never ending, and turnover happens, right? Kevin is retiring. He's got a retirement contract. That's going to naturally create turnover in the district, right? And as a manager, I'm, that's my skill, right, as a manager of people, when, when leadership turns over, things change, right? In many different ways, good, bad, and otherwise, right? But how do, how are we going to like, look forward to that? And really, those are some of the things that concern me the most as a school board member, is the change that I know is going to happen in the district, just as a, as, as, as people retire, right? Like, how do we, how do we make sure that we, that we keep that foot on the gas or stay, stay where we're at?
Foot on the gas.
So those are things that, that are my concerns and, and questions, right? What are we doing to make sure that things live?
I've tried to give you a good answer, but I don't know if you want to listen to me keep talking anymore. Maybe it'd be good if we did convene a group that would, you know, seriously, continuously answer that question. So, I, I think, but I do think that's the work that we do every day in our admin meetings, and that we try to, and talk about with our staff and our community, and most importantly, with our students. Because we, we've said to them many times, all these great things you're really fired up about. They really are. The kids overwhelmingly are really like, proud of what's happened. But I said, okay, we're not done. You have to earn that every single day. So, it's, I love the question, but like I said, I don't know how much you want to listen to me.
Well, thank you. I think that does help. Yes.
Does anybody else have a comment or a question for Jack?
I just want to thank you for the impressive work you've done, your team has done, the teachers. I said this to Kevin Carey, I was just a parent, you know, it was probably 10 years ago, that I'd said, we had, had always thought we'd sell our house and move out of Westmont before it could reach high school, and now people want to be here for the high school. That's amazing to me. So thank you. Thank you. To you and your team.
The best part of it is everybody is together. That's the thrill of it. When you're a part of a team, and you're cohesive, and everybody has a say, and everybody makes a contribution. So, thank you. But it's really, it takes everybody to do it.
Right.
That's awesome. So thank you again, and thanks for the great presentation. Just for the sake of our guests here from the high school, we're going to move to the other agenda items that, that are high school related. So, if that's okay with the rest of the board, we'll move to what's listed as Item 6, which is the change in Westmont High School graduation requirements.
Right. So, there's a couple of items on here that are discussed at this board meeting, and then at the November board meeting.
And then at the November board meeting, the high school will be asking the board to approve those. And the first one is a change in high school graduation requirements. Our high school has a local graduation requirement, a .5 business requirement that the high school is looking to change that. And just basically students would be able to pick up another semester of an elective of their choice. So it could be in business or it could be in another area. Is there anything else that you want to add, Megan?
Just ahead. So the, it is a local requirement. The state does not require any more business specific. We were still, we're still planning to offer the business classes, but just give the kids more opportunity and options of what those, what their electives would look like. So that they don't have to take a, like a central tech class or they have to do that in order to graduate from high school. But gives them the option of maybe inserting an art or maybe still taking the tech class, whatever makes them feel more well-rounded as a student to be able to fulfill those graduation requirements. So we're not eliminating any classes, just the specific local .5 semester requirement.
I guess my, my only question is about enrollment in those elective classes. Like you don't anticipate that it will affect anybody's employment in any way, right? No, okay, great. I think, I, I like it. I think it's, when we talk about the portrait of a graduate at the high school level, I think we've broadened what that looks like and this, you know, just speaks to that a little bit more, so.
Yeah, allow more flexibility to the students. I think that's a good thing.
Any other questions? Okay, then we're also going to move on to the Westmont High School new course proposal, which is item seven on the agenda.
And the high school has two new course proposals for next year. Again, this is discussion tonight with a request for approval at the November meeting. They're connected to the AP Capstone. And Megan, would you like to share any additional information?
So it is, there are. There is an umbrella Capstone. Under that umbrella, there are two courses. One of them is seminar and one of them is research. You would, the students would, they're both year-long courses. You would have to take seminar before you can take research to be under the full Capstone. And that particular, if the students fulfill the Capstone requirement by taking both courses and successfully completing them, then they have a specific kind of certificate towards their diploma to take with them to their college or university of choice. And it does really promote an interdisciplinary look at other AP Advanced Placement courses to promote, to promote that kind of rigorous, challenging coursework for our students.
I have another similar question, just about who teaches the class and how that changes. Like I appreciate the proposals for the cost of curriculum writing and JSTOR, which is a wonderful resource, but just in terms of, will this require additional payer hiring of teachers?
That's a good question, and that's something that was a consideration while we're putting it forward because we think it'll be FTE neutral. We're not, we won't require any more FTE. So that is one of the reasons why we're putting it forward.
Is it replacing other coursework or are you not sure on that aspect yet?
We are going to protect, once again, it's a gentle balance in our building that we want to protect all of our electives, you know, that's kind of what we're up against. We are committed to having it not disrupt our fine arts program as an example or our other electives. We don't know that this will be a very large enrolled course. I mean, we could be surprised, but that would be nice, but, and I think it's a high-quality course, no question. But we think it'll be FTE neutral and we want to protect the electives. That is something that, because we're not asking for more FTE, I guess is the important thing. But if you don't, anytime you ask for more FTE, then the question would be, where is it coming from? What are you going to reduce? So we think it'll be within our current FTE structure, we'll be able to accommodate this course and still protect the elective courses.
Sure.
So there'd be a cap where just, do you have an enrollment minimum, I guess, for the other electives? I mean, whenever, I love giving students choice, and I also think these courses look awesome because they are so inquiry-based. But like if there's only two or three kids, are we going to pay somebody to?
No, no, we would not.
And hopefully there will be more who are interested in that. And that's, so is that kind of how it works out for all the electives then? Where there's got to be a certain number enrolled? Because at some point, there just aren't enough teachers to teach it. And even, and I'm hearing you say FTE, but what about like, would it be part-time? Or would it be an extra stipend or something like that?
Sure. So Michelle Therese is our media specialist, and she's a veteran, and she's amazing in what she does. And she's willing to teach this class as part of her schedule, if you will. So there's no additional, and it's not taking away from any classes, but we're not asking for additional FTE either. So that's the short term. And then every year with enrollment, kind of getting to your other point, we have to take a look at where, so we're not going to run a class with just a few students, no. That's all part of a balancing act when it's spring, and then we have to make sure. But we're not, we think that allocation we've been given for FTE over the years is one of the reasons why we've been able to maintain our success along with great teachers and students too. But, so we're not asking for more FTE is the bottom line. We think we have what we need and we're very grateful for it. The one thing that we have talked a little bit about that I think that Superintendent Carey and the board did respond to was the music program. So remember that situation. But the concise answer is we're not asking for extra FTE. There's no extra monies to be, to allow these courses to go into existence, and we will still protect our elective classes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anything else for the folks from the high school before we move on?
Guys, send me a selfie from Washington so I could post.
Definitely.
Got to get that up for sure.
The good ones and then the like after hours. The social hour. Okay. Item number two, going back up to item number two on the agenda, it's presentation of monthly financial statements for September.
All right, you have a tough act to follow here. All right, they have the September financials for you. During the month, we received $167,000 from the state. There are $41,000 of fiscal year '21 payments and $199,000 of fiscal year '22 payments voucherd that we have not received. We did receive two installments of the 2020 tax levy this month totaling a little over $8 million. So total property taxes collected to date are $24.7 million, which is a 97.44% collection rate. So this last year, we had 94.45%. At this time and the year prior, 94.5. So tax revenue now this month caught up and is a little bit, we've collected it a little bit quicker than we have in the last two years. So as a result of that, you'll see that revenues are slightly higher in the Ed and Tort Funds than the prior-year averages. We also received $46,000 of fiscal year '21 payments. We received evidence-based funding this month. And then we have payments voucherd for both fiscal year '21 and '22 that we have not received yet. In the O and M Fund, we are above, revenues are above again, and that's mainly because of the property tax receipts. And then in the Transportation Fund, again, revenues are above the prior-year averages, and that's because of property tax receipts. And then there's $103,000 of state payments that are voucherd. As far as expenditures go, expenditures are lower than the prior-year averages in the Ed Fund, both with and without contingencies. Again, this is a result of some of our salary increases for some of our employees for FY '22 have not been paid yet or determined yet. And then retro pay for FY '21, we're still in the process of finishing that. So once those things are on there, you'll start to see those percentages coming up. And also, we have a large amount of ESAR fund grants, so it's kind of skewing averages as well. And in the O and M Fund, we're similarly spent as the prior year, so 16.76% to date. And then the Transportation Fund, again, because of, you know, COVID and everything else, the averages from one year to the next are really, don't, there's not a trend. They're above average right now because we are transporting students and we've received invoices and we're paying them. So that's why the difference is there. We have the investments attached for you, also the Student Activity Fund balances. And then our, in the fund balance, we have a 28-point, almost $3 million fund balance right now. So September is the high point in our fund balances because we've received, you know, 97, almost 97 and a half percent of our tax revenue so far. So you will start seeing the trend of that fund balance going down as we make our expenditures for the year until the next tax revenue cycle. Does anybody have questions?
What was the goal again for our, for our fund balance to be at?
Is it a 40 or 45%? I can't remember.
Okay, thank you.
I should have it emblazoned in my brain, but.
Any other questions for Kim? Otherwise, Kevin, let's move into your update on the '21-'22 school year. Just going to let that pop up between everything, just as a reminder.
What did Jack do? So what did Jack do?
He just made sure his numbers stay good so we could see them.
All right, hopefully, there we go. All right. So every board meeting, we give the community an update on the current school year and how things are going. And again, I always want to remind our community in case this is the first time they're watching us. But again, we have our guiding principles, which obviously we're focused on the health and safety of our students and staff. But also, we're equally prioritizing full-time in-person learning this year. And knock on wood, we've been able to meet that. And obviously, we want to make sure that we're still providing our students the best learning opportunities. DuPage County, and this is as of last Friday. Uh-oh. This looks like some wrong. Presentation. Oh, it says the 12th. Oh, no, it's the 26th though, isn't it? One second. I think I got it right. That is the wrong one. Oh, there it is. I'm going to go through them again.
Our meetings have been too concise lately, so we just got to mix it up.
I know, right? We have a little downtime.
All right, this should be the right one. So yes, this is it. So this is as of last Friday. The, we're still at a high level of transmission. And actually, on Monday, we had our regular meeting with the DuPage County Health Department. And they said, at that point, the new cases were increasing and it was more like 120 per 100,000. So definitely trending in the wrong direction. And the positivity rate for the county is 2.38%. But again, it's that number of new cases that keeps us at a high level transmission. And then for our local positivity rates, this is again, as of last Friday. I did take a peek today just to see where Westmont was because I know, at least in our school district, we've been having some activity. And Westmont's trending over 3% right now for the last seven-day positivity rate. But again, overall though, the positivity rate is fairly low. For our staff, since our last board meeting, we've had no new positive cases. And so that's excellent. And overall, for the year, we've been experiencing a lot of cases. Since our last board meeting, we have seen some activity, primarily in students that have tested positive for COVID. So we had, since our last board meeting, seven additional cases at Manning and seven at our high school. And as a result of that, because of close contacts, we've had to exclude students. And many of the high school students are tied to the football program. Unfortunately, we had to end our season prematurely as a result. But one of the good things, we, sometimes I know parents are upset when we have to exclude their children as a result of close contact. But case in point is, three of those positive cases were students that were excluded. And so fortunately, they were already at home, were no longer in their classrooms and possibly be in close contact with additional students. And so that's, you know, the reason why we exclude students. Because for some students, it may be a few days before they have symptoms or test positive. So we did have, again, an uptick. Fortunately, this week, it's early, but we haven't been experiencing new cases this week. So hopefully, this is our little blip. But I do want to remind our community, you know, we, we had the trick-or-treat trail Saturday. We've got Halloween coming up and then the holidays. And so how important it is, again, you know, practice those mitigations. And if you're in a public setting, especially indoors, wear a mask. Make sure that if you have symptoms, you're staying home. And if we continue to do those, we'll, we'll be able to weather this. Again, this is just the transmission levels, and this is what it's based on whether or not we're at a high level. It's two criteria, it's the positivity rate and then also the number of new cases for 100,000. It just takes one of those to bump you into high. And that's why DuPage County is currently at a high level of transmission because we continue to be over 100 new cases for 100,000. We continue to be under the governor's mask mandate. Again, there is talk that he may be looking to change that. But as of right now, we're still under the mask mandate. We practice physical distancing in our schools at three feet when masks are worn. And again, on buses, masks are required as well. And our contact tracing is based upon that three-foot threshold. Just a reminder to our community that with the mask mandate, there are penalties for school districts who do not follow through on that. And so that's one of the reasons why we are maintaining the mask. And then this is actually going to be updated because again, yesterday, the DuPage County Health Department, the guidance is changing a little bit. One of the big changes, which I know our families will not be happy with, is currently when a student has symptoms and they can return to school if they have a diagnosis from a doctor, that's no longer going to be accepted. It has to be a negative COVID test. And so we'll no longer be able to accept something from a doctor, but the students will have to have a negative COVID test. So I know that's not going to be popular, but again, we're. test. So I know that's not going to be popular, but again, we're trying to maintain our safe learning environment and keep our students in school. Again, the quarantine for people who are test positive and are not vaccinated for 14 days, close contacts, it's for 10 to 14 days. The 10 days, though, they, there's a check-in process with the health department, indicating that the person is symptom-free, and then also they have to have a negative PCR test before they'd be able to return. And then vaccinated persons who test positive have to quarantine for 10 days. And vaccinated persons who are in close contact, they, they don't need to quarantine, but they have to have a negative test in three to five days. We had this, this is kind of our reminder, that we want to make sure that we keep this on our radar, and possibly have it as a discussion item as our next board meeting. But, you know, finalizing our criteria, if the governor does lift the mask mandate, then as a district, it becomes a local decision. And, you know, what criteria do we want to base that on to make sure, again, we maintain a, a safe environment. And again, the, the masking is not as critical. Last year, it was whether or not we'd be in-person or remote. It's a much difficult, more difficult to pivot when you're talking about families and childcare. The mask mandate, it's much easier to pivot. So, but at the same time, we need to finalize that criteria. When it comes to testing, again, the DuPage County Health Department, as long as we're at a high level of transmission, they're not going to support the test to stay. The shield testing, again, they're swamped. Other districts have not been able to get on board with them. But I've reached out to North Shore Labs. That's another entity that can provide testing. We could do it for our students and staff. It could be on a voluntary basis. The test would be covered by health insurance, and then those families without insurance, Department of Health and Human Services, they would be able to, to cover that test. So this is another direction we can go. And they're going to be providing me with additional information, how long the onboarding process is. But we could implement this testing procedure if the, you know, board wanted to go that direction. So again, I, again, the shield testing is, is difficult to, at this point, they're overwhelmed. But North Shore has been responsive, and it seems like that would be a direction for us to go as a district. And that's my update.
I'm sorry, would that North Shore testing be something that, like, a shield was done by us, but then sent to them? Same situation?
Right, same, same thing, right.
And are you recommending that, we implement that, Kevin?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to have, especially now that we can no longer accept a doctor's diagnosis.
Yep.
That definitely would help our families and minimize the amount of time that students would have to be out.
Yeah.
Do you know why they made that change? Was it just getting too, too loose with kids coming in?
Right, it was. I think it's because the, you know, COVID symptoms are so similar to other ailments, that really you need to have the negative test to confirm that it's not COVID.
Yeah. Do you think also at the next, with the next update, if we're, when we revisit the conversation about masks, we could get an update, another update on vaccination percentages in the buildings?
Sure.
And kind of along the same lines, still keep seeing a lot about NEJ now for the five to 12-year-olds. So will you guys do anything like you did with the junior high and high school as far as a clinic?
Yes, we will. So right now, us as early as next month. And so the plan is that, yes, we would have a vaccination clinic, and hopefully get many of our families to participate.
Great, yeah, I did, yes, thank you. And that update would be awesome, too, with the mask conversation. Thank you.
That partnership that we had in place, who did we end up using? Westmont Pharmacy and Juul Osco?
No, for the teachers, we actually ended up coordinating with other districts.
Okay.
To do it. But the Illinois Department of Health and School Board is, is offering a, a way for districts to partner. And so we should, my understanding, it's very easy to get it established. And so we should be able to, to do it that way.
Okay, because I remember it had a couple more steps last time.
Do you know if their information for the percentage of vaccinated, is that just from the county? Is that, how is it available to you? Is it from a county level, like DuPage County level? Or is it, did you get a specific for our district?
We'll be able, if we, by working with our families, we'll be able to get it locally. We, we can't drill it down to the school district through the county, but requesting vaccination cards from our students will be able to get that percentage.
When did the change take place to, excuse me, negative test only?
Monday was the first we heard of it, from the health department.
Mon, yesterday.
Yesterday.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Okay, well then, my, my next question then was, how was it communicated? Or, so maybe my question is, how will it be? I'm asking because there's, there's always so much, so many moving parts in communication.
Right. So I will, my weekly update to the community, I will make them aware of the fact that it's been changed. We're going to update it on our website, and then each of the buildings, they do communications to their families as well, and they'll include that in their communications to their families.
So I also had a communications question, and it goes back to the, you know, the situation at the high school, and even with the number of students we've had at, at Manning. What's, is, what's the process that's in place for communicating with families who have been in close, you know, their students have been in close contact? And, you know, you showed us here the guidelines for students who are vaccinated, and how long they have to quarantine, and students who are unvaccinated, and what the process is for them. Is all of that being communicated upfront to students when, I mean, I assume this was a learning process for us this time around, because it's kind of our first big surge. But moving forward, what will be the communication process for families?
The way it works is, when there's a positive case in a, in a building, there's, the principal sends out just a basic communication, we've had a positive case. When, and then there'll be further information if your child is in close contact. And then it's either a call from the principal or a call from the nurse to those families, letting them know their child is in close contact. And then also what the, the exclusion period is. Where I think the confusion comes in, and again, everybody has to look at those decision-making trees that are produced by the IDPH, because when you look at the decision-making tree for a close contact, it references a seven-day exclusion. And, but at the same time, there's also the caveat, but it's up to the local health department. DuPage County does not recognize the seven day. And so that's where some of the confusion came in.
Yep.
Some parents want the seven day, and want their children back in seven days. But because we're at a high level of transmission in the county, we cannot reduce it to seven. But 10 days, we can. So I think that's where some of the, the confusion comes in.
Yeah, I mean, I did hear a little bit of confusion. And I, I guess, I think, just as I said, like, a learning experience from this time, you know, making sure that, that admin's really clear on what our protocols are, the principals, the nurses even, if they're the ones communicating with the families, that they're really clear on which guidelines we're following, so that families don't, you know, have mixed messages being sent their way about what they need to do, and how long their child's going to be in quarantine, and, you know, et cetera. I think, you know, again, we're lucky for us, this was our first real sort of.
We've been pretty fortunate, yeah.
Yeah, so.
If the buildings and the nurses are, I don't know if it adds to the confusion, are they clear? Or do they have a, I guess, in their decision tree, do they have a way of identifying that day, so they know that time period?
Yes.
Are they identifying that okay, and giving communication about, and being clear? This is the date where you're using, okay, 10 days.
Yes, they do.
Right.
Yep, they tell those, they tell those, parent, the day the child can return. And yes, they're, they're doing it consistently.
As I say, I know at the junior high, they give you a full packet with the dates, and she'll write in, because my dude got sick a couple, a while ago. But yeah, it was all in there.
So to, a couple things, to follow up on the, what Jess said about an update on vaccination, you know, status, I'd love, love to see that for, as we're continuing to talk about and solidify our guidelines. The change from DuPage is going to be challenging, for sure. Can you help me understand what that looks like for families that, say, already have kind of doctor's notes on files, right? My child has seasonal allergies, they're always leaking out of all of the things, right? And we've already been through our initial process with the school, and they already have a doctor's note on file, and, you know, they're, they're congested, you know, until November 15th, right? Until a frost sets in or something. What does that process look like for, for those families who've kind of already done? I, I can understand kind of the moving forward piece of it, right? I can understand that for, for a kid gets a cold, or, or strep throat, or, you know, something else. But what does it look like for those families who, and I know there's a fair number of them, who've already kind of done that?
You know, that's a question I'm going to ask the health department, you know, to see if we can still honor those. Because that's originally, again, that's the direction we gave our, our families, right? If it's, if this is seasonal allergies, get it written from your doctor, we'll keep it on file. So I'll have to see if we can still follow that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean migraines, right? Kids who get migraines and, and throw up because they have a migraine, that's a, that's a really, really standard connection there, right? So are they going to have to go and get, you know, a, a test every single time if we've already kind of got that? So that's, that's helpful. Yeah, yeah, I was just, I was like thrown by that.
I think there's, I think there's a difference in saying you have a chronic medical condition, you fill out things, and you have that. You have to be careful. Because yes, you're going to have a migraine, you're going to have a migraine from COVID. They're new symptoms. There's something new that's going on outside of what's already been written, your documents that you've submitted every year, when we have to submit things, and you list chronic illnesses on your paperwork. But when there's an outlier, yes, you have to, you know, and you can't necessarily make, I think it's maybe strongly communicated that, yes, document chronic illnesses with paperworks, what medicines you may be on, and all, what we usually do, not make administrators, you know, physicians or healthcare workers, if they have an outlier or something happens, they have to follow their protocols.
Yeah, I mean, there are true, there are true outliers, right? And how do we, how do we support them, you know? And, yeah, but, and then the other question I had was just, you know, is there anything, this last week was, it was a surge, and it was a little bit like, whoo, hey, it's Halloween, and, you know, I was having flashbacks. And those, there were seven cases at Manning, but it was not an outbreak. So those cases were not connected, and there was another seven at, at the high school, but it was also not considered an outbreak. So how, how were there, how, how were those, that many cases, but then not considered an outbreak?
If, unless, you know, it's the health department that makes that determination. We, we submit all the information to the health department, and then they in turn follow up with those positive cases. And then they have their list of questions. And I think it comes down to if they can make a definitive connection between those two students, you know, as a result of being on, you know, at football practice or in that classroom, then they'll determine that it's an outbreak. Unless they can conclusively determine that, they may not determine that it's an outbreak.
Okay. And then if they do determine something an outbreak, did we have, what is the plan for that? Is it a, is it a classroom that goes remote? Is it a potential school? I don't remember us talking about that. And if we have, I apologize.
Well, this, this year, what's, what's different from last year is, last year, school districts is super intense, have local control where they could say, we are going remote. We don't have that autonomy, and so we have to work with our health department. So the health department's response to us was, keep doing what you're doing. So in other words, keep monitoring your students, excluding those students who need to be excluded. The other response could have been, you know, we, and then obviously, we, for football, we shut down the football program. The other could have been, like, at the elementary level, you know, we really think that this group of students need to go remote, so it would be a classroom. You know, they could say an entire school needs to, depending on how widespread they think it is. But we did not have to make any, any changes.
Okay. And that's, and that's, that's helpful, and that's also very helpful that, you know, you made it clear that it is not a us decision, it is a DuPage County Health Department decision, and that we don't have the same type of autonomy that we did, you know, last year. So was there anything in any of those cases that we could have done differently as a district?
Not that.
In retrospect?
No, I mean, not that. I mean, again, we're following all the mitigations, all the protocols. Obviously, a sport like football, you know, it's difficult to, it's even difficult to contact trace, you know, in that regard. And then at the elementary level, especially the younger grades, the teachers work really hard maintaining three feet. But the little ones, you know, sometimes it gets a little bit more challenging. And so sometimes we're a little bit conservative. It's over a 24-hour period, 15 minutes of close contact. And so we're going to err on the side of, yeah, let's call it a close contact.
Okay, thank you, thank you. That, that definitely helped alleviate a little bit of the flashback I was having. So appreciate it.
Kevin Ford, I was just looking at your chart for the staff. You said, since the last meeting, there are two. But how do we count the coaches? Are they not counted?
Oh, the coaches are not in.
And, okay, the staff, okay.
Yeah, we, we could start. This is the first time we've had, you know, I didn't think about that piece. But yeah, we did have three coaches. Two were symptomatic, and one was symptomatic. And all vaccinated.
So for the North Shore Labs recommendation that you've made, do you need anything from us? Do you need approval? Do you?
As long as the board's okay with me pursuing it, the, there will be an approval that'll come to the board. But I'll just reach out to them and let them know to start, you know, working with us on the onboarding process.
Okay, great, thank you. Does anybody have anything else for Kevin? Thanks. Next topic is the transportation and crossing guards update.
So with regards to the transportation and, wait, pull up my screen again. Crossing guards, again, you know, a lot of the, what's happening is outside of our control, because, like so many things, and I shared the board in the update, I think it was two weeks ago, that even now food service, you know, the ability to get certain food items is going to be more difficult as that supply chain, chain becomes problematic. But also, again, with personnel. And so Westway right now, they have enough drivers to cover our routes. But anytime that there is a driver, driver that calls off, then that can result in delays. The on-time has, has improved. And then at our end, we've improved our communication with our parents. There's the possibility of, and we're debating whether or not, there's pros and cons to it, but there is an app that Westway has that, you know, parents could track the bus as well. It's, again, the reason why the hesitation is because you want to be confident that it's used appropriately and safely for our students, in terms of tracking where our students are at various times. And so, you know, we want to make sure that if we go that direction, it's done, you know, safely. But then we're also communicating to our families, as soon as we know, we're advertising on behalf of Westway drivers. And again, we're working with Westway to see if there's any efficiencies in our routing that would also help and possibly even reduce, use a route, which would help them. And then also with the, the crossing guards, this is a, obviously a new challenge, because last year, we were able to transport students who didn't necessarily qualify for transportation because of the COVID and the pandemic. This year, we're not able to do that. And so we have some students that live within 100. Uh, we have some students that live within a hundred, 1.5 miles of a school. And may have to walk to school and with our, us being in a K two, three, five. That's what created the issue with the crossing guards. Again, those two new crossings, it's still very limited, the number of kids who cross there. That hasn't changed. It's only. A few kids that cross at the, those two locations. Andy Fran doesn't track. How many students they cross? That's not their normal routine. Again, on our end, um, we were manning it with our business office staff. We've stopped doing that, especially because of the number of students. We're working on posting the links to Andy Fran and we sought volunteers. Some of the things that we can do that Kim and I have talked about is. We could have a shuttle that goes between Manning and Miller, which obviously then eliminates the need for students to, to walk there. The one thing about that is if we're transporting students that are less than a 1.5 miles. We don't receive state reimbursement for that and so that cost either falls to the district to cover. Or we ask, um, parents to be paid riders for their students. So. You can recruit it through that, but that is one thing that we could do. In the short term is add that shuttle. It eliminates students having to cross at Travi and Cass and then Naperville and Cass. That would help. And then obviously, long term. Once the district locks in on what the long term future is at the elementary level. Well, then, you know, we'll be sitting out with Westway and putting together that long term plan for transportation. Then it makes sense for Westway to invest their time into it, the district invest their time. But I think, uh, definitely transportation has improved since the start of the year. The, uh, the crossing guard, I mean, there, there isn't a lot that's in our control, but we could. Eliminate the problem if we add the shuttle.
In the past, when we used the shuttle before COVID, we used the shuttle for dual language students. Was that, how was the cost, um, I guess supplemented then? Cause I don't, if, um. But just being like a parent, I didn't.
Those kids lived the away, the 1.5 miles or whatever, I think.
I don't know if that was.
Cause that's a, that's a shuttle for the, um, because they would normally have gone to one school. But they were going to a different one. This is. This is different.
The, what was going on then, it was Manning. Manning was going to Miller. Those students who took the shuttle were students that. Would normally be within a mile and a half of Manning, but were more than a mile and a half from Miller. So. And it.
I don't know if that's necessarily the case.
Was that?
I don't know if that was necessarily the case. It was just, I know it was offered because they were Manning students.
Right, because their attendance center would have been Manning.
So that cost, um, because they didn't. But they were in that grade in a one and a half, the cost was provided in. But that wouldn't be the same.
No, because their attendance center is, is different.
I'm just saying that as there are some kids that, like the K through one, that would have gone to Manning. And possibly would have walked because they're at Miller.
Right.
They're at one and a half.
But that's a, it's a, a district decision now versus a program decision.
I don't, I'm not sure, like you're, you're saying like if though that qualification suffices then. Which I think you would have a number of students who live. More than a mile and a half from Miller.
Right, but.
And they're using a shuttle.
Right, but their, their attendance location now is Manning or Miller based on their grade, not on the program. That's the distinction.
So what would it cost to do the shuttling if we do that?
I don't know what the, the, when you submit the claim, the reimbursement is prorated. It changes every year. So I don't know what the impact really, there's not an easy way to, um, determine that and it depends on how many kids.
So who's using the shuttle if you're already, if your attendance is Miller and you're a kindergartner that lives same Black Hawk Heights? They already have a bus, probably because they're more than a mile and a half from Miller. Who's using, who you, who are you projecting using the shuttle?
It would be, it would be, uh, students, you know, K one students, and I don't think there's very many. K one students that would need to get to Miller. And then if there were any two, five students that. Would need to cross, um, Travi and Cass and get to Manning.
So students who are just across Cass, but not necessarily a mile and a half.
And, and Naperville, right?
Well, yeah, but so if kids going to K one.
K one would be late because Miller starts before Manning.
So if, if you had to add another bus, another, well, you can't add another route because they don't have a driver to do that. So.
Yeah, like how, how would this?
Adjust the start times.
How would it logistically happen for? Would it, would it be serviced through Westway or would it be like a shuttle that we? Did with like an activity bus or something?
Can't transport students on an activity bus.
So it'd have to be through Westway.
Or a regular route.
How many legit complaints have we gotten that this would be an option? I've just heard hearsay.
Right, I mean.
I was going to ask the same exact question. I feel like when we first talked about this, there was so much noise and there was something with the buses that week and it was a really big deal, but like. We want to make sure we're using our time and our resources effectively is like, how, how urgent is this in your opinion? What, what do you suggest we do?
Since, since we've gotten through the start, I think things are, are working pretty smoothly, you know? I think it's with a lot of things. There might be a, a small vocal minority, you know, and I, I think it. It comes from, more from. The fact that we have a K one building, a three, five building more so than. The true issue of safety for our students.
So this is about grade level centers for some people. Okay.
More so than the.
Yeah.
I think it's been, been working, you know, smoothly. Westway's been working very closely with us. So I think it's been working very smoothly.
I also think there's confusion about the crossing guard issue, um, the, the. Complaints, informal complaints that I've read, um, on public forums are. Are not just about the Cass and Travi and Naperville Road and Cass crossings. They're about the ones also that are. Manned by Andy Frain. Um, so I think we have two. Things that we're kind of mixing and matching here, the, the. Crossing guards that needed to be, or the, the areas we thought we would need to add crossing guards because of grade level centers that. Really didn't get a lot of usage when we were, when we supplied crossing guards. Those are new. That's one set of issues. The other set of, of issues that I've heard about is just the consistency of the. Timing for the Andy Frain staffed. Crossing, uh, stations at Norfolk and Naperville, um, road. And I think it's Warwick or Wilmette. Just the consistency of those crossing guards being there when they need to be there. I mean, that's not a, people are, are making that a grade level centers issue. That's not a grade level centers issue. That's an Andy Frain issue and a crossing guard staffing issue. Maybe there's more traffic because of grade level centers going through those, but those places were. Were stations last year. And we just have an issue with getting Andy Frain to consistently staff and have their people there when they're supposed to be there. And so. I feel like there's, I still don't truly understand how. Like the assessment of how big the issue is, back to Ange's point. Certainly if we have a real safety issue, we need to address it. And I guess that's the, the question is, you know, what's our sense of whether there is a real safety issue or not?
Can I answer that?
Of course.
I don't know if there is one because again, as we talked about, as I stated at the last board meeting. The district office is not getting calls about Andy Frain not Manning, not staffing those spots. You guys are seeing it because you're looking at social media posts. We do not get our information on what's happening in the district through social media posts. So unless people take the time to call us and give us specifics so that we can investigate it. We don't know.
And to, to reiterate, we staffed those additional crossings, right? That first month of school, the business office staffed the newly created crossings and saw very limited.
Correct.
Crossing action. From, from the, in front of the police station, I think it was. Nobody crossed without a parent going to Miller.
Right.
And then at Cass and Naperville, it was, I think, three crossings regularly. Um, a day, one of them was with a parent. And again, that, that the business office staffed that and that it was not in order to review it. Um, and that it was not significant and we couldn't keep that up understandably. You know, throughout, throughout the entire school year to give the, having the business office, um, cover it. So yeah, I think, I think what Laura said about it really being two, two different issues, right? Um, we do have to. We do have and on our deck it, you know, thinking about what the future of elementary looks like here, you know, in Westmont. We do need to make that decision in order to help solve this decision. But then there is the separate issue of, of the crossings that existed previously last year, five years ago, 10 years ago. Having trouble being staffed by Andy Frain services. And that the best thing that parents can do when they don't see staff there is to reach out to the business office. And if I'm hearing. This correctly, you've not had any, anyone reach out to the business office. About a shuttle need between the two or. Staffing guards or crossing guards missing at, at the, the crossing stations that the Cass and. Norfolk and, um, the specific last year ones.
If we get specifics, then we can contact Andy Frain and the village. We have contacted both of them saying, these are the things we're hearing. But we don't have specifics. We can't say that it was at, you know, Cass and Norfolk. At eight, 11 a.m. There should have still been a crossing guard there and there wasn't or whatever. So we need the specifics.
I, I want to say this too. I don't know if our parents and community knew before, you know, we've stated in a board meeting that the business office wanted to know. And I think I know the answer, um, I asked you Kevin, is if parents have reported this to principals or to buildings. Cause I don't know if a parent knows to call the business office. They may know to call.
No, it's the.
Correct. They would let us.
Yeah, the principals would have brought it to us.
And, and even in what, for, again, I don't do social media. But even from what I'm hearing is on that is that, again, there are not specifics, not a specific time, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, I, unfortunately, I think there's a, a campaign afoot and it's being leveraged on a safety issue for kids. And I'm not dismissing that there might be a safety issue for the kids, but.
And we need to be made aware of that so we can address it.
If there really is a safety issue, we really need to hear about it in the business office. That said, I, um. The shuttle idea, I think is an interesting option. And I'm wondering if we can, um, even though we don't have official. You know, data on how big the safety issue is, I'm wondering if we could survey families to see. Who would? If, if we're even willing to entertain that idea, would we be willing to survey families to see who would be, who would be interested in taking that shuttle?
That would be an option once we decide the future of the school. I don't think at this point.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with that.
If we can't follow the chain of command of complaints.
Yeah.
Then I don't even think this should be something we need to really look at.
And I think even on a point of who's using it outside of the buses that we're already using, it doesn't sound like a good. Right now, you know, resource, I guess as we get into our future planning, we can ask that, you know, if you're not allowed to take. Regular bus. Figuring out even if it's a good option with timing. Start times for schools. And I think it's a lot.
I think, I think once the decision is made, that all of that is going to need to be assessed, all of it. I mean, even consideration of possibly paid closer. People who pay to take the bus. So, but that's after December.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hesitant to spend time on it right now without any specific.
I'm okay with that too.
Without anybody specifically reaching out and asking, um, for it, although if there are people who are interested with it, in it. I encourage, I encourage them to reach out to the business office and their building principals. Um, and if, if that changes, if we get, you know, if, if you guys get interest in it, let us know. And, and so that then we can, but I think with, we don't have much interest now or we don't know how much interest we have right now and without any. Any specifics, um, it's hard to make a, it's hard to make a decision to have our teams spend time and resources on it.
Does anybody else want to weigh in? I, I, I hear what you're saying for sure. Anybody else want to weigh in, Kevin?
So for like the, the Cass and Trav crossing, is it, that's, so that's mainly Miller students?
It is.
Like, just as a parent, I would kind of, I wouldn't let my kid walk for himself like that, you know, I would just. I'd want to walk with him just for safety and even other safety issues further down, I don't. I don't know. It just doesn't seem like a great practice.
Right, so I, so I think moving from here, Kevin, what you have in the memo of what the steps to take, I think. We're in line, uh, besides the shuttle, like you said, that. Making the community aware of employment opportunities and then. Continuing to work at Westway. I think that's a good plan from here.
I know, um, Steve May at the last village board meeting talked about safe route to school. What, can you educate me on what that?
Sure.
What that means? Is that a, is it a program?
It's a, it's a grant, I'm not sure through what office and maybe I got. But there's safe school, a safe. Route to schools, right?
Safe routes to school, that's right.
And basically it's things like, for instance, if, um, in order to make. The walking route safer for students. So if there are streets without sidewalks. If, uh, an additional traffic signal would be beneficial. It's those types of things and usually it's a partner between. The municipality and the school district and you joint apply and you try to get dollars for those projects. So if we had. Like a, a route that for our students is technically a hazard route because there's no sidewalk. And if we're able to put a sidewalk in there, then it becomes a safer route. So it's those types of projects.
Or like the street signs that we talked about.
Yeah, the street signs like on Washington there, making it known that it's a crosswalk coming up, getting those, that's really helpful to know and it's also really helpful. To have heard it, um, in the village board meeting as well as kind of understanding it here and, and that we're working together.
I think regardless of everything, it might be something to look at where, no matter where we land on the schools because of. When they're going to reroute. The Burlington Linden, when they start the, the construction on the apartment, that's going to tear up a lot. And now with the new rerouting of Manning.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I think we might need to look at save, the safe school passage.
Sure.
Regardless.
Yeah, good point.
Any other comments or questions on this topic? Okay. Where are we? IASB resolution is the next thing on the agenda.
Hi, this is, okay, of course, this is my first year and I'm sitting in for. Jess at the conference, so, um. I don't know if you guys have looked at this yet, but I get to sit and vote on things we want. To decide on. So the packet, thank you, Shannon, we all have the packet printed out. Yeah, I don't know where I stand. I haven't gotten the orientation of what I'm going to do. That doesn't happen until the third. I signed up for that to make sure I know what's going on. But I am going to be a representative for everyone sitting here. So I just think some of these things I need your input on. To know where we're going. I mean, I can vote for my own personal opinion, but I don't think that's fair or necessary.
I was just asking, do we have a meeting before?
We do. The Tuesday before is our next meeting before the conference. So. Um, I just wanted to bring this up to you guys. If you guys, I know. We probably all didn't look at every last resolution on here.
Can we, can we take some time to look at it?
I think, I think, yeah, if we can come to decision before. I think, I think, yeah, if we can come to decision before then, just so I know, I mean, it even shows me in here, I got a little marking where I can mark where where we stand on things, so I know what I'm going into. Um but yeah.
I mean, I know in. To do, like if we had that time and then our next meeting, is it too close to that?
No, there there would be time. I mean, typically, some of them are pretty vanilla.
Yeah.
You know, so you look in like, ah, yeah. And then there may be something that is kind of like, oof, I don't know if we really want that as a school district. And those are more the ones that would bubble up to the surface that you would discuss at the next board meeting.
So it sounds to me like what we, what we want to determine is what we oppose, not what we support.
Right, right. If there, if you look at one that really raises a red flag for you or really aren't comfortable with, that's what you bring to the table and for the board to discuss and reach consensus on.
I mean, I know that's how past practice was as well. Um you know, the delegate would kind of go through all of them and and sort of bring to the board. And the board also would review all of them, but the delegate would point out like
Right.
this one and that one and the other might be controversial. And so would like the board to weigh in on how um we want our district represented.
I feel like that's a lot, a lot to ask of one person to like, if even if I had this or if like anybody to be like, let's look at this one, this might be controversial. Like, I don't, how?
I mean, for especially for our, you know.
What's a better approach?
Experience level here.
Yeah. Where it doesn't also feel like one person has to read through every single word of this.
Yep.
You know, not that we're volunteering or anything.
No, I mean, I think for.
And now I'm feeling really bad that Ange is sitting in for me. Oh, my gosh, but thank you.
You don't feel that.
You're like, whoo, you're like, I'm a little relieved on this one.
But also, yeah, I don't think it should be like, I don't know, Kevin, and like, are there any that jump out at you as like?
I can, honestly, I haven't looked at them yet.
Yeah.
So I can, I can look at and let you know if I think that there's anything that would be.
Or like, do superintendents like talk to each other, like, whoa, have you seen this resolution? Like?
Very rarely. The only, again, only when there's things that are really, and I'll give you an example. When um it was, again, there were some school shootings that have taken place. And so there's the whole debate whether or not teachers should be armed.
Armed, yeah.
And there was a district that um where they were located, the um first responder response time was much longer than like where we'd be in Washington. And so they really felt strongly that that's what they wanted. So they had a resolution that um they wanted the school board association to um promote legislation allowing teachers to be armed in schools. And so that was one that was brought to the table here to get the board's consensus on, hey, you know, the delegate, how do you want me to vote on this when I'm in that room? You know, so it's, it's typically, like I said, it's things like that that really kind of.
But you like heard about that one, like lots of people heard about that one. So like, we'll kind of hear about some that are controversial. And to be clear, too, then, what I'm hearing is that a school district will put a resolution in here and it's that the I A S B will then promote legislation. It's not creating a law.
For, right?
Right, the lobby for it. So it's about like, here's what we want you to lobby for.
Here's what we support here.
Got it, got it.
If you guys look at this, I think something that could be controversial is number nine at the bottom of the new resolutions.
Yep.
Like, I feel like that could be controversial and it's just asking
Yep.
if we keep that curriculum local, like to locally control that curriculum or not, so. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can all go through it for sure. I can't guarantee I'm going to read all of them in great detail. Like the clean energy infrastructure federal funding.
Right.
Hover on for too, you know, there's some of them, like Kevin said, you can tell are pretty, like, they're going to be kind of standard.
Right, by the title, you're just like, oh, yeah, I can get behind that.
Right. Okay. So we're all going to kind of take a peek at these and then talk next time about any that we, and and Ange, for sure, if you want to say, like, I need your.
Right.
You know, I need help on this one.
Get on everyone's table before I just show up there and go, I'm going.
Anything else on that?
No, that's all I have, so.
Okay. Um so we have the conversation about the N S B A uh letter and the I A S B response. Um which um this is regarding the letter the N S B A sent to President Biden and then the I A S B's response to that.
Let's, we reiterate, N S A B stands for the National School Board Association. And then I A S B is Illinois Association of School Boards. So we're under the Illinois Association of School Boards.
Right.
And then N S B A is above.
Right.
Okay. Just so people know, like, know what all that is.
Well, but N S B A is a organization that I A.
I A S B is a member.
Not part of.
It's a membership organization and I A S B is a current member.
I don't think they paid their dues.
Who has not paid their dues, right?
So there's some question over that.
They're, they're questioning whether or not they want to maintain their membership, would be N S B A.
Is that something that would come up at this meeting about?
About the conference?
The delegate's support not being a part of?
I'm not sure how that, how that would work.
I mean, I don't think it's on the resolutions or but it could be one of our things that we talk about while we're there.
Right. So um Carlos, I think you requested that we put this on the agenda, so.
The only reason was because there was, there seemed to be a lot of noise about um the fact that the 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 letter from the national organization. And I thought it would be good, especially that we, not necessarily that we talk about it here, but just we make sure that the public understands what this Illinois school board, what their response was, because that might not have been as public.
Right.
Um and it wa- and it was more recent.
Yep.
Um and so that was it. It was just, and and I don't know if anyone wants to take the time to explain what the differences between the two letters was and what one was purporting among and what one, the other was purporting. They're, they're included in in the public content for tonight's meeting. So anyone who's, who's paying attention and wants to read what one said and what the other said, they, they have access to this information just like everybody else. So I don't know that there's a whole lot of discussion to be had. I just, I just thought it was important that everyone understand
Yep.
where the Illinois school board, and and I, you know, I don't, I don't know if there's any, anything else to discuss. Just making sure that everyone had access to the information.
Yep.
Yeah.
I, I think, my, my understanding is more so from the Illinois board and their response. I, I think a lot of my information comes from their response.
Right.
I think the whole um topic of what's been going on around the nation um with attacks and threats to school boards. Unfortunately, that they um, that they've had to deal with. I think that's the, the large issue that came about uh with this conversation. But from the Illinois State Board, I, I don't think they like that the National Board took this stance without um getting feedback from potential delegates and members. And it was kind of a drastic stance. I think, I think that was a large part of it, is that this board hasn't been, I guess, and it hasn't gotten input from its delegates to do something this large on this scale. Was something, but I think, you know, largely, just overall, just saying that um no board will tolerate threats or attacks to anyone but school boards. I think that's the large thing. And I think this Illinois Board was saying that we won't tolerate that, but they take a stance and use local authorities to address it. And um, yeah, you didn't have to go that far, you know, with the president. But I think they take a stance within protecting their board members. I think that's a large thing that the Illinois Board was saying. And I support that.
Yeah. I, I mean, what, what I heard from the Illinois uh school board, I S B E, I S B A is um, is, is A that anything that would discourage people from participating in a, in a meeting like this is not a good thing.
Right.
That's number one. And number two would be that local communities handle these things locally. And, you know, and they, and I think they also pointed out that the national pointed to instances in the state of Illinois without even consulting the, the state of Illinois. Which I think added some insult to injury.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do think there's a difference between um, you know, community involvement and threats. I think you can say that, you know, we welcome input, you know, whether in agreement or not, um that's welcome. What's not welcome and won't be tolerated is threats and attacks, so. Two separates.
That was it.
Okay. Anything else from that topic? Or if not, we can move on to the medical insurance plan?
Okay. Um I just, I wanted to make um the board aware and just have a little bit of um more of an in-depth discussion about our medical insurance renewal. So um the insurance committee met last week with um our broker and the a six point oh three three percent increase was presented. That we've been monitoring our um uh experience over the past two years. Um it's fluctuated widely. Um so beginning in um twenty twenty, we had a large increase about ten percent. Last year, it was four point nine percent. Um and so um we were able to um get, start getting our reserve level back up a little bit um during the twenty twenty calendar year. Now, unfortunately, the twenty twenty one calendar year, our reserve um is being depleted. And so when we're looking at things, unfortunately, before we had um, we did not get the September bill until after we had the renewal and the meeting. But it was um a very, another very large um bill. So we've had one, um, two, three, about four months with very large um bills that have exceeded the contributions that we're collecting for our self-insurance plan. And so I'm working with um our attorneys to just see what our options are in terms of if the reserve goes negative, what we have to do. So I just, I want this to be on your radar. Um we're hoping that maybe the next couple of months, i- if we hit our overall aggregate, then potentially we'll wind up okay for this year. Um we do have a large number of participants in our plan, an unusually large number that are um reaching the stop loss of seventy five thousand dollars. And I, I'm not sure what, I mean, it's an unusually large number. I don't know if this is an anomaly year or if some of that's going to continue into the following year. So we also did, we've been looking at ways to um, you know, some plan design changes. And um unfortunately, as you can imagine, nobody wants to increase the um deductibles or the out-of-pocket. We have a very generous plan. So one of the things that was presented to us was offering a hybrid P P O. It's called the Blue Cross Options. So it is priced a little bit um lower, the cost is a little bit lower than the current H M O. And it's a kind of a hybrid between um, you have providers that um you have the same kind of benefit structure as the um in tier one. The costs are a little bit lower and the benefits are a little bit richer. If you go into a tier two provider, you're going to pay a little bit more. And so um there's a blended premium structure in there, or not a blended premium, but a blended um deductible and out-of-pocket structure. So um that would be priced um above where we're at with the H M Os because we don't want to drive participation from the H M O to this blended. But we do want to drive participation from the P P O, the traditional P P O to this. So that's one of the options um that uh we would like to approve for that. But um right now, instead of um, I did put it on as an action item in case I had all the information I needed for tonight. I don't. I just want to make you aware that um this is kind of what's happening. The committee has no interest in a cost-sharing scenario to build reserves, like other committee participants. So as soon as I get some additional information from our legal counsel about what our options are, I'll bring that back to you. Um it may require a special board meeting so that we can get open enrollment done. And so I just, I just wanted everybody to be aware of of what's happening.
Which, what's the committee? Sorry.
No, it's a good question.
Um so the insurance committee is comprised of me and then representatives from each of the unions. Okay, and then a, a non-union a- as well. And so um one of the things, they also want to, um, you know, the, they also want, some members want to go out for R F P for brokerage services. So we can begin to look at that. Um, you know, right now, we pay eight dollars per employee per month for the brokerage fees. If we were a new client with our current broker, they would be charging twenty two dollars a month. So we have a longstanding arrangement. It's, that's very low. That price has been the same the entire time I've been here. That's unheard of. Um but, you know, we can um go out and look at other um, you know, see if another broker can do something else. That, I would say, would be more feasible if we were fully insured. If we were a fully insured plan right now, they're um delivering uh renewal quotes for just for January one twenty twenty two of anywhere between twenty and forty percent increases. So um the fact that this is that low, a- again, they do actual studies. This is where Blue Cross is saying that, you know, we should be at. Let's hope that they are correct. Um but the other thing is um, you know, to um go to a fully insured plan at this time, based on our experience, would not be a good move. The premiums would be significantly higher. And really, the, so it's, it's about plan design changes. And so um, you know, we're going to continue to work and try and do that. But again, and this is what I want to, you know, I've, I mentioned in my memo about the grievance in the past when the prior business manager had made a change to um co-pays. And so um, you know, I, I don't know what to anticipate in there, but, but we need to do something. And so we're going to work on that going forward and, and see what we can do. And then try and do a comparison of other districts to see really how rich our benefits are. The um broker did, um, One Digital did do um an analysis of the thirty nine schools that they have. They're not all school districts, but our benefits are, on average, much richer than other school districts. If you are in the private sector and you look at our plan design, you know that it's, has very rich benefits compared to what anybody else in the private sector is paying or experiencing.
And I think, we talked about, Kim, we've gone on for R F P's request for proposal, right?
Mm-hmm.
Acronym.
Acronym jungle.
At an insurance, so, but.
But we've, we've asked for quotes from other insurers before, and many of them have.
Other insurers. No, we haven't gone out for an R F P for insurance.
Okay. So what have we asked for before that they have opted not to?
Oh, we, no, they market our um, they market our, our
Our broker.
They market our group to other insurance carriers. So Aetna, Cigna, United Health, those things. We do not receive any quotes for our book of business because our, they cannot be competitive. So it's a no quote, not competitive. Um one of the uh major um healthcare providers doesn't quote based on the length of our relationship with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So, so that's the other thing. So it's not even like we have other options to consider for other providers.
With him being self-insured.
Yeah, so going to another broker wouldn't necessarily create this
Right.
this wealth of
Right.
choice necessarily, and it would certainly cost the district more.
Right. And until now, I mean, the self-insured plan has worked out okay for, has worked out okay for the district. I mean, we've even had, you go back to twenty thirteen, there was a negative, we actually had a negative one point five, five percent renewal. You know, we've had some. You know, we've had some low renewals, less than a percent, a percent, and then we've had some, some spikes in years based on this. So, again, I'm hoping that this is maybe an anomaly year, although, given the large number of people hitting stop loss, I, I don't think, I think some of that's going to carry forward. How much, I don't know, but I, I want you to be aware that there may be some pieces that we have, that we may have to fund that, that deficit in our, in our self-insured plan.
How many employees are there in the district that are under this plan?
Um.
Approximately?
Let's say 160.
I'm just trying to understand the, the impact of, if, if we went, that, if we had to cover the $14 a month difference, roughly.
Oh, that's, yeah, I, I didn't do that. I just, it kind of even did a shortfall of about $200,000 or whatever, and that's about $1,300 a participant, an employee, so.
And this, so, in your opinion, Kim, is the best option to offer that, offer and encourage the hybrid plan?
Yes, I think it's worth a try. So, in this plan, one of the examples that they used is, you know, if you have, need an MRI, we, under the PPO, you have options. So, you go get an MRI, it may cost $5,000. If you're in the PPO, in this other hybrid plan, the pricing may be $1,000. You may have the option to go to the provider that's $1,000 or one that's $5,000, but if you go to the one that charges $5,000, your costs are going to be more because of the agreements with the doctors on what that charge is.
So, is Hi, does Heidi join the committee meetings, like when you propose this?
Yes, she is the broker.
Okay, and so, will she explain all of this to the, to the teaching, to this faculty and staff also?
Yes, so what we're going to do is, they're going to put together videos so that people can be educated on the different plans and the choices. She's also going to do Zoom meetings if people want. In the past, you know, last year, we obviously didn't have any in-person meetings with staff, but in the past, we've had them at the different schools, either before or after school, lunchtime, a handful of people come. She's also available for phone calls if people have questions. And so, it's really about making sure that people read the information that we send out to them with the enrollment packet. And, you know, a lot of times, people don't read the information that's put in front of them. So, but we will be, you know, we've been talking to the unions and we'll be actively promoting this, giving people knowledge of, so that they know which hospitals are in at which providers. The other thing, last year when we looked at it, we looked at it as a, as a replacement for the PPO, and that did not go over well. And, again, a lot of people's like, providers weren't in it. Now, Advocate is part of this, Northwestern, so there's some bigger players in this, so that might help as well.
Great. Any other questions for Kim about the medical insurance plan?
I, I just have one, one last question. That is, what, what decisions do you anticipate coming before this board?
Um, that you'll approve the renewal? I just want to make sure, I want to understand the funding piece before, if we have any options with, if we have a shortfall. I want to understand that before we make this decision.
Okay, so, there's, there's the decision to approve the renewal, but is there, is there some other decision that you might recommend other than that?
No, if the renewal, but depending upon the funding mechanism, might impact the rates.
But, you'll get a set information before we have to make a decision on.
Yes.
Approving the renewal or not.
Yes.
What would be the consequence of not approve, approving the renewal?
Well, we're going to approve, well, you'll need to approve it. It's whether or not it's at the 6.033% or something other than that.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, no, you're going to approve it, but it's, I, I want the full information so that the board fully understands what the financial implica, impact, implications might be to the board.
But, we're going to have to endure those financial consequences, no matter what.
6.033%, I'm, I will tell you that, that's what we have to go with, or I may give you some other option.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah. And I, and I don't know what that other option is right now, they're investigating that.
And you're saying that's what we'd likely have a special board meeting to.
Yes, to do that.
Keep that moving forward.
Got it, thank you. That, that explains it.
Okay, great.
Then, just quickly, the dental insurance, we're fully insured on that, and so, that's a 9.9%. We're good there, so.
And, Kim, just for clarity, I can take the renewal off of the action items for tonight?
Yeah, because we can just, we can just approve medical and dental together.
Great.
The others, I had you do in the consent because those were, the rates all stayed the same. They were year-two of multi-year agreement, of guaranteed rates.
Perfect, okay, thank you. Okay, moving into the action items, the first is the approval of authorization to pay taxi bills for the 2022 fiscal year.
Okay, and this one kind of goes hand in hand with the next one. So, as you recall, at the, just several days before school started, we were, Linda Clawwitter was informed that Sunrise could not transport the majority of our students. And so, she and her staff, we all just scrambled to provide transportation services for our outplaced students. And as a result, we have taxi companies that we're using, and the one in particular is AM Regional. If you notice, their invoice was like $71,000 this month. And so, they are obviously a small company, they're not a big company like a Westway or Sunrise that can wait 30 to 60 days after they invoice us for payment. So, what I'm asking the board, much like we do in the months where we have only one board meeting, is that you authorize me to release those taxi payments early. And then, you'll, you'll see them at the, at the subsequent board meeting and approve them. One of the other things I was going to talk to them too about is maybe invoicing us a little bit more frequently than once a month, so, to help their cash flow needs as well. And so, you know, again, if you guys feel comfortable with this, that's, that's what I'm recommending for them.
Any question on the, on the payment of these, our Westway, not our Westway, sorry, our Sunrise contract. Doesn't have like a minimum payment. We're only paying for the services that they are providing this year.
Right, we're only paying for the students they're transporting.
So, yeah, that's, I wanted to make sure, I wanted to understand if we were paying Sunrise a minimum, and then we also had to pay taxi, taxi service on top of that.
No.
But, it's really, it's more of a shifting of, we would have paid this to Sunrise.
Right. Now, the, the class to Sun, Sunrise may have been less than this, but, yes.
Okay, thank you for that.
Good question, though, thank you for clarifying.
Clarification, yep.
Any other questions? Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to authorize and direct the treasurer to pay taxi bills as they are received for the fiscal year 2122 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Okay. Second action item, the chair, oh, this is a resolution for emergency expenditure funds for special education transportation with Aurora-Napier Transportation, AM Regional Taxi, American Taxi as presented. Is there anything extra on this, Kim, that you want to mention?
Yeah, well, just, so, because of the, so when I received the first bill, the $71,000 bill, I was, I was not expecting it to be that much. So, the, this, because we're spending that much, it should have, we, typically, you would go out to bid for that. Given the timing of when we knew that we had to find alternate means of transportation, did not allow us to bid, and subsequently, I did not think we would be spending, that this was going to continue. This is going to continue. So, we received an email from Sunrise. Again, we're, we keep contacting them, trying to get our students moved away from the taxi transportation to Sunrise. And it seems like, you know, they get another driver or two, like one, and then two more quit. So, there's just never, you know, they're kind of, you know, don't even have their head above water right now. So, the odds of Sunrise fulfilling our contract this year are probably slim and none. So, I, so we're putting together this emergency resolution because we're exceeding expenditures on the normal bid limit, and we foresee this happening, going out to bid to try and find another bus company at this point. Again, the odds of somebody bidding on this, someone being able to fulfill that contract, again, is, is highly unlikely because everyone is in this situation.
I guess I do have one, one quick question slash comment. So, like, we've been talking about, we don't anticipate that situation getting much better, so is this just, like, right now, like, we have to authorize the emergency funds because kids need transportation? But, is this going to be readdressed and reallocated in the budget? Or was it already readdressed and real, like, we need more money in our transportation, transportation budget than originally projected, or we're fine?
I, I don't know. I can do, I can, we can extrapolate if this continues through the rest of the year, what that's going to look like. Yeah, we also keep getting a, new students that need to be outplaced and things like that, so that's, that's a little bit of some of this as well.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we can extrapolate and see where this is going to be.
I think we have to.
Yeah.
Some projection.
Like, it's going to get any better.
Yep. And then, we also, you know, we'll be looking at our Sunrise contract a little bit more in depth too, and, and exploring any options that we have with that.
Great.
Any other questions? Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for emergency expenditure funds for special education transportation with Aurora-Napier Transportation, AM Regional Taxi, and American Taxi as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Okay. Kevin, your superintendent's report?
So, a couple of items in my superintendent's report first. As many of our community members know, the school district has been involved in elementary planning for most of this year. Started during the summer, and it's to have a long-range plan for our two elementary schools and how to best utilize those and meet our student needs. And so, currently, we do have a survey available to all of our stakeholders, so even if you do not have children in our schools, you can take the survey. There is a link here in our board book, but there's also a link on our website. We're also putting a link on social media, we're advertising on the signboards out in front of the library and the fire station, and putting QR codes in some public places as well. So, hopefully, people will take advantage and take the survey. We do want your input. The survey will close on November 5th. And then, the Westmont Holidays Parade, it's Saturday, December 4th. In the past, the board has walked in the parade, and so, I'm just gauging the interest of the board. If you'd like to do that, the parade starts at 5:00. Usually, you line up in, in front of Manning Elementary on Linden, usually, I think about 4:00, 4:30, they start the lineup.
What was the date again?
Uh, December 4th, Saturday, December 4th. And so, if you're interested, let me know, and then we'll, in turn, let the village know that we'll participate.
Is it really going to start back at Manning? Because I remember just a couple of years back, we started at the library.
Yeah, the library, right.
They changed it, I think, because when they started at the library, the first part of the parade, there were very few people. It wasn't until you crossed Naperville.
Gotcha.
So, now, they do the lineup on Manning, and they go Naperville, and then down Linden.
Okay.
And then, it, just as, when you get to Quincy, I think is one of the parade route ends.
It's fun to walk, that's just my input. Like, it's one of the few fun things we get to do.
When you've got healthy legs, it's fun to walk.
It's, I mean, it's fun to do the parade, I should say, whether you're walking or, you know, riding in a vehicle. Do we have to walk? Like, could we get a vehicle if we wanted?
You can get a vehicle if you want. I know in the past, we easily would have, somebody would drive a vehicle, and we had magnetic signs for the car.
Yeah.
And then, that car also held the candy for people so that you could.
I offer my toaster box, it's nice and flat sides, I can drive.
And then, the other people would walk behind.
Yeah.
And hand out candy along the route.
That might be a good option for us, too. So, anyway, we can let you know.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Let me know. And that's my report.
So, Kevin, I have a question about your report, actually. The, the communication of the survey. Have we ever done anything like this in the past? And are there any methods of communicating the survey that we're missing to make sure we're covering, you know, a majority of the community?
I think, I think we're, we're trying to hit every avenue we can. You know, we're even, like, I'm reaching out, like, Oakwood has a homeowners association, so I'm reaching out to the homeowners association, see if they'll circulate for us. And I think other neighborhoods, you know, if they have like a local Facebook or something like that, or reach out to those.
Like Liberty Park has their own, okay.
Right, reach out to those.
Can the city support us, like, via the website, the city website?
I can reach out, and.
Be really nice if.
Yeah, we'll reach out to them.
It was, you know, main page right there, or if they could send out one of their community alerts.
Yes, sure.
You know, because we, we obviously have a lot of, a lot of connections within the, within the school district that we service, but I know that what we're really seeking out here is the community's feedback, the people who are, who are not currently serviced by, by the school district because they are affected by the choices. As we talked about real estate, you know, earlier tonight, they're affected by those choices, so.
What about, this is just through an idea, what about mail? Like, would we just send something in the mail that has the QR code and the website? I know it's, costs money and.
Right, you, the, to do it, to mail something, you have to use bulk mail, and it would be to all of Westmont, not just our school district. And then, you would not get the Clerton Hills or the Downers Grove.
Uh, got it, okay.
So, we could do that, but you're, you know.
You're not really hitting the district.
Right.
And you might be scooping up people who aren't in the district.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
Which was also, another question I had is, how do we determine via the, I know, I, I did the survey. But, how do we determine if we are, if the, the folks who are, who are doing the survey are serviced by 201? Because there was, like, I didn't enter my address or anything.
Right.
And I, and I don't think that, I, I am, I'm not saying that, you know, I think that's going to be the majority, but I think that there could potentially be outliers. And I, and I want to make sure that the information that we get is as indicative of, of the communities that we service as possible. So, I wonder how we could, and, and maybe that's a tweak to the survey real quick for,
Right.
you know, right, for, like, for now through the 5th. But, then we'd need to, you know, solve for, for the, for the previous. But, then the other piece was, I, I think there's potential for, like, door-to-door dropping those QR codes, like, especially for the Black Hawk Heights and the section of unincorporated Downers Grove, and the potential for getting those QR codes up in, like, you know, Westmont Business Windows up and down so that it's just real easy to, like, you know, take the survey.
I think if people want to volunteer and step forward to Canvas, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so, too. I mean, I think that's a great opportunity for, for people to volunteer and take some flyers along while they're trick-or-treating.
Yep.
So, if there's any volunteers who want to come forward, you can contact.
Maybe the, maybe the task force could, could support that, because I, I know that there's, I know there's people who, who, who would help if they were.
Right, yeah.
We'll reach out to them. What's the closing date on that survey?
November 5th?
November 5th.
November 5th.
Right.
All right. Moving on to the board reports, does anybody have any board reports this evening?
Can I just throw in that one question that I had for you about agenda setting?
Yes, of course.
So, just something that occurred to me when we get asked for agenda items is, and I don't know if it's possible, but I would love to know, like, what's already kind of on, on deck for the agenda? Only because, like, you know, I have like a zillion ideas, sometimes I have none, but, you know, I, I think I might be like, well, wait, wait, I'll hold this for next time. And also, just like redundancy, like, you know, we send it and you're like, that's already on, so I don't know. So, I don't know, is that possible that we get, like, just, and I'm not saying the full agenda, but like, a bulleted list of, like, here are some of the things.
Um, I mean, that's, if the board would like that. Shannon and I usually meet the Tuesday, the week before the board meeting. And we kinda do a, a review it and do a, a draft of the agenda, and then I set the meeting with Lauren and Deena to flesh out the rest of it. Um, so, we, we could, after Shannon and I had, are done with our meeting, we could send out a rough draft if that's what the board would like.
I mean, I think it would be, if, if that's the process, I, I didn't wanna make you guys kinda change your process and do things extra early. But if that's the process, I mean, I'm already trying to remember to send a note to the board at least a day or so before we do our agenda meeting. So, if you even just sent it to me, I could, I could forward that. It would prompt me even to remember to send my- and I could just forward that email on to the full board and ask for agenda items.
Is anybody opposed to that?
Not at all.
I think that sounds like a great idea. I, I question the same thing. Ooh, what's gonna be on it?
Right.
Right. That'd be, that'd be awesome.
Just so you know that, um, it more, it can morph, right?
Sure.
So, what you get is the rough agenda, and there could be some-
Of course.
Right.
You know.
Just make some sense of what's on there.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, great. Any other board reports?
No, just a reminder of the hundredth year anniversary. Board members can swing around the school board table.
Yep.
Just hang out for a little bit.
Um, Westmont Junior High PTO was having a, um, a double good popcorn fundraiser, so check that out.
Um, they also did a really great beautification of the front of the junior high this weekend, so, um, that's exciting.
Oh, yeah, and congrats to Manning for throwing their monster dash. They shortened it this year, so there was no confusion. And they mitigated, so we didn't have mass amounts of kids there. So, families took advantage of running in their neighborhoods, and some ran the mile on the street at different times and just took pictures, so it worked out. Everyone had a lot of fun.
Awesome. And isn't there a chili cook-off coming up soon?
There is tomorrow, tomorrow. Miller and Manning are having chili cook-off. The teachers will vote and see who the winner is.
Chili's in the crock pot is-
Super fun. So, why don't you have, like, the president of the board as a taster? I am available, I'm just saying.
I mean, you were so busy throwing your pumpkin.
All right, um, anybody else with board reports? Okay. Okay, moving on, future meetings and events. Uh, there is an elementary PTO meeting November first at six PM. That's at Manning. The Westmont High School Fall Play is November fifth and sixth, uh, at seven PM at Westmont High School. There's a bilingual Parents Advisory Council meeting on November tenth at five thirty PM. Westmont Junior High, uh, PTO meeting, there's no date. Okay, there's no date for that yet. Um, but it will be at seven PM, whatever day. And then, our next board meeting is November sixteenth at six PM here at Village Hall. We do not need another closed session, uh, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn the October twenty-six, twenty twenty-one regular meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? All right, we're adjourned.